From Salt Inclusive Methodist Community.
Pray with me, y'all. Gracious Creator, as we gather today to guide the work of this county, we begin with gratitude, thankful for the gift of life in this extraordinary place, for the oceans and the wetlands, for the creatures who share it with us, and for the people who call it home. Remind us that caring for creation and for one another is sacred work. Grant us wisdom to make choices that protect and sustain all life, especially those of the most vulnerable among us. Inspire this governing body with a vision that reaches beyond today, a vision that shapes a just and thriving future for New Hanover County. When we disagree, may we still find unity of purpose. Teach us to listen deeply, to honor differing perspectives, and to seek the common good above personal interest. Let cooperation and goodwill fill this room and ripple out into our wider community. In the midst of change, strengthen all who lead at every level. For these council members, these officials and staff, may they be guided by wisdom in their decisions, a hunger for fairness and compassion, and a joy for their service and peace in their hearts. Bless the work done here today that it may benefit and give hope to all who live, work, and play in the county that we love, in the many names of the one we call holy. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all join me with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda today is the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull anything off of that?
Motion to approve with the addition or the revision of number four that was presented to us today.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we have the presentation of new employees.
Commissioners, good morning. Not only do we have some new employees to recognize, and I'll get to the punchline, there will only be three of those, but we've got some important retirements to honor this morning and then important service awards to recognize. I want to say on the front end, three retirees combined had 94 years of service to New Hanover County. That's, I say it all the time, we can never replace the people who leave and we don't try, just do our best to hire people who were as good into the work, but 94 years is not something that you can forget about and not honor properly. And so with that, I'd like to recognize our first retiree this morning. It's Matt Saunders from the fire service. And Matt, I know your wife is here. Yes, please, come forward. Have your wife come up. And your daughter? If you don't mind. Here, y'all stand right over here. Granddaughter, too? So I'm gonna read about 20 years of service that Matt's given to our community in fire rescue. Throughout his tenure, Matt has mentored countless team members, strengthened emergency response operations, and advanced the department's pursuit of excellence. His steady leadership and composure under pressure earned him the respect of colleagues across the organization. Matt's professionalism and innovation have been recognized through multiple stellar awards. In March 2022, he earned a stellar award for his exceptional assistance during a marine rescue at Masonboro Island when equipment malfunction and visibility were plugged. Though stationed elsewhere, he maintained communication and coordinated support through his own professional network to ensure a safe outcome, thank God. His innovative thinking and leadership were again acknowledged during the department's work toward international accreditation, underscoring his pivotal role in advancing operational excellence. Matt's career exemplifies the higher standards of integrity, stewardship, and accountability. His contributions have strengthened the department's culture of safety and professionalism, leaving a lasting legacy within fire rescue and throughout New Hanover County. Matt, are you sure you want to do this? You want to retire after all of that? We hate to see you go, but 20 years of outstanding service. Thank you to your family for letting you do some of the most dangerous and difficult work that a local government can do. Matt Saunders, 20 years of outstanding service. Congratulations. Thank you, you've earned it, sir. Thank you so very much.
Here it is. Thank you. Thank you.
Matt, congratulations. And you can change your mind all the way up till five o'clock. Commissioners, we've got another person we're gonna recognize this morning with 34 years of service in Health and Human Services, Cheryl Lynn Grantham. Cheryl Lynn, if you would come forward and let me read about your 34 outstanding years. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you want to stand next to me and letting me read about your time? Cheryl Lynn Grantham is retiring after 34 years of dedicated service with New Hanover County, most recently as part of the centralized services team within Health and Human Services. Working with that team that supports child protective services, foster care, and adult protective services, the three most vulnerable people in our community, Cheryl Lynn played a vital role in ensuring that all background and public safety checks were completed accurately and promptly, helping to safeguard the county's most vulnerable residents. Cheryl Lynn, thank you for that. That is how you keep people safe, healthy, and secure. Her outstanding work has won her multiple stellar awards, including a notable recognition in January 2024 for exemplifying the shared values of stewardship, accountability, and integrity. She was commended for mentoring colleagues and collaborating to build a comprehensive training module that strengthened the background check process. Her nomination praised her dedication to maintaining a consistent, timely flow of reporting to protect children and adults in our community, all while training others in exemplifying what true public service looks like. Cheryl Lynn's compassion, commitment, and professionalism have set a lasting standard of excellence that will continue to inspire her colleagues and the broader county family. And Cheryl Lynn, the same question, sure, you want to do this after 34 outstanding years? Cheryl Lynn, congratulations. 34 outstanding years of service to New Hanover County. We brandly appreciate it. Good luck to you. Thank you so very much. Cheryl Lynn, congratulations. And thank you again. 34 years of service in affecting the welfare of the most vulnerable in our community. What a career. So we've got a third retiree this morning with 40 years of service. That's two careers for some, one career for Gloria Bowden. So Gloria, if you would come forward and let me read a bit about your time in service and invite your husband to come forward, please. Congratulations on 40 years of service. Thank you so very much. Gloria Bowden is retiring after 40 years of outstanding service with the Economic Services Division of Social Services, most recently as a caseworker in the long-term care unit. Gloria has exemplified professionalism, accountability, and teamwork, ensuring the residents she served received timely and compassionate support. She's been a valued member of her unit, playing an essential role in helping older adults and families access needed care and benefits. Gloria's dedication earned her a stellar award for professionalism and accountability in February 2022. She was honored for stepping up when another county experienced a Medicaid backlog, leading her team to process the work for the benefit of other counties' eligible participants, assisting beyond her own workload, demonstrated exceptional stewardship teamwork, and a commitment to public service. Gloria is described as dependable, kind, and thorough, someone who could always be counted on to deliver quality work while lifting the spirits of those around her. Her strong work ethic and positive attitude have left a lasting impact on her department, but more importantly, on the citizens that she's served for the past 40 years. It seems Gloria like a rhetorical question, but I'm gonna ask you too. Are you sure this is what you want to do after 40 years? Walk away? I used the wrong words. You're not walking away. You have earned the right to enjoy time on your terms. Congratulations. Thank you for what you've done, Steve. Thank you for letting her be part of this team. We wouldn't be who we are without her. Gloria Bowden, 40 years of incredible service to New Hanover County. Please, congratulations. Gloria, again, thank you so much for 40 years. And Commissioners, I don't think it's an understatement to say 94 years of service deserves another round of applause. Congratulations. We have some service awards to recognize this morning, and when I call your name, if you would, please come up, I'd like to be the first to thank you and then ask you to visit with the board. And so we have one person this morning who is receiving a five-year service award, and that's Ray Chifors in the sheriff's office. Ray, congratulations. Thank you, sir. Gloria, again, thank you so much for 40 years. And Commissioners, I don't think it's an understatement to say 94 years of service deserves another round of applause. Congratulations. We have some service awards to recognize this morning, and when I call your name, if you would, please come up, I'd like to be the first to thank you and then ask you to visit with the board. And so we have one person this morning who is receiving a five-year service award, and that's Ray Chifors in the sheriff's office. Ray, congratulations. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we must have been incredibly stable for a decade because we're gonna jump forward to 15 years of service to recognize. So no one joined the team in the last 10 years, apparently. So with 15 years of service, we've got two folks we're gonna recognize this morning. The first is Moretta Chewing from the Department of Social Services. Congratulations, and thank you for still being here after 15 years. Congratulations. It takes a village, but I did recover quickly, and I'm sorry it was at her expense. Maybe we ought to try that again. Also, with 15 years of service in community justice services, Roxanne Pearson. Roxanne, congratulations, and thank you for being with us after 15 years. We're gonna proceed to 20 years, and we've got a fine person to recognize this morning, Gina Jones from the sheriff's office. Gina, congratulations on 20 years. Thank you for still being here. Well, we did have a 10-year lull there, apparently, so, Commissioners, we're gonna recognize 25 years of service this morning, and we've got two folks with us this morning. First, from 911, Lynn Gavin. Lynn, congratulations. Talk about a tough place to work. 911 Lynn, thank you. Commissioners, also with 25 years of service, I'm gonna take a little bit of personal privilege here. Kelly Johnson, her children grew up with my son. So Kelly Johnson, 25 years of service. Congratulations, and I'm glad we survived it. We've got two final service awards this morning, both with 25 years of service, and I'll take the suspense out of it, both within the fire service. And so the first person we'll recognize this morning is Michael Stoffel. Michael, congratulations, recently promoted to deputy fire team. Commissioners, also with 25 years of service in the fire service, Blake Turner. Blake, congratulations. Thank you for what you did. Commissioners, five years, 25 years, matters not, they deserve another round of applause. Thank y'all for everything that y'all do. And so we're gonna recognize new hires that we'll see certainly before five years, but we look forward to seeing them again in five years. And so when I call your name, if you would, please stand up, we want to give you a proper welcome to New Hanover County. And our first person this morning in emergency management is Alan Brooke. Alan, thank you for coming to work with us. Thank you so much. Also in emergency management, not sure there's a more important department in county government, glad we've got two outstanding folks joining, Joe Solomon. Joe, thank you for joining the team. And then I think I can say returning to the fire service, Steve Barnett. Steve, welcome back, sir. Commissioners, that does it. It takes a village, and Mr. Chairman, it's harder than it looks, isn't it? Thank y'all very much.
Government Finance Officers Association Award.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
On an annual basis, the county staff prepares this annual financial report for the county. It provides a full accounting of all of the county's transactions and is very comprehensive. It includes, requires a significant amount of expertise and effort of our staff. After we prepare it, we mail it to the Government Finance Officers Association and ask them to please grade it. I'm happy to report that our recent report was graded by the GFOAO and was determined to meet the highest standards of quality and was therefore issued a certificate of achievement for excellence. We're real proud of that. The staff that made it happen are here with me today, and I'd like to recognize them and ask them to introduce themselves and make sure you know who they are. Please give your name and position and years of experience, if you would.
Good morning, I'm Maria Stanfest, grants and project analyst, and I've been with New Hanover County almost 18 years.
I'm Beverly Thomas, the investment officer, and I've been with the county almost 36 years.
Thank you.
I'm Jessica Brarti, and I've been with the county for eight years, and I am a projects and grants analyst.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Teresa Hewitt, and I'm a financial analyst, and I've been with the county for 31 years.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Linda Brothers, and I am a senior financial analyst, and I've been with the county for 14 years.
Thank you.
Good morning, Wendy Pope, I'm the deputy CFO, and I've actually only been here for nine months, so not active in this, but definitely in the next.
Please join me in congratulating this fine staff.
Amazing. Let's take a photo.
Okay, next is gonna be consideration of Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation read by Mr. Zepplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas domestic violence transcends all ethnic, racial, gender, and socioeconomic boundaries, weakening the very core of our community, and whereas the effects of domestic violence are far-reaching and may have lifetime implications for families, the criminal justice system, and our community, and whereas Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated provides emergency crisis intervention, ongoing support, and services in New Hanover County for victims and survivors of domestic abuse, and whereas 1,295 adults and 99 children receive direct services such as court accompaniment, advocacy, empowerment groups, and counseling, including 137 adults and 89 children who received emergency shelter through Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated in the year 2024, and whereas on September 4th, 2002, Gladys Bryant, an employee of New Hanover County for more than two decades, and on August 6th, 2008, Tariqa Pulliam, an employee of New Hanover County for two years, lost their lives in acts of domestic violence, reminding their coworkers and friends of the prevalence and devastating consequences of domestic violence, and whereas many other individuals throughout New Hanover County and the United States find themselves in abusive relationships and need a safe and empowering environment, and whereas this year's Domestic Violence Awareness Month serves as a call to action to citizens of New Hanover County to encourage, support, and empower one another to live lives free from violence. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners is committed to addressing domestic violence in all its forms, creating a community that upholds strong values, fosters safe and loving homes for all families, and encourages citizens to work together to prevent and eliminate domestic violence. The board further proclaims October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in New Hanover County, adopted this 20th day of October 2025 by William E. Reivenberg, Chair. Good morning, Lauren. I understand, or you have some comments, I understand that Mr. Ben David is also with us who would like a couple minutes to address the entire community.
Yeah.
But please, go ahead, Lauren, and then after that, we'll have you come up and take a photograph.
Awesome. Thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and remembering the victims that we've lost and honoring the survivors. One in three women and one in seven men are victims of domestic violence. This is a community issue. Survivors are in this room, in our grocery store aisles, our church pews, our workplaces, and we must continue to work together to support survivors, and to the survivors, we see you and we believe you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, esteemed members of this county commission, good morning.
Good morning.
Let me rise in support of the Domestic Violence Shelter and Services, who for decades has been a vital partner with the justice system in giving victims a voice and in making sure that survivors of these crimes have been supported. You know, this time last year when I retired as district attorney, I said I was going to step into this space. When you read out names like Gladys Bryant and Tariqa Pulliam, those are not just names to me. I was at both of those crime scenes and took both of those cases into a courtroom. You might know that Tariqa's abuser killed himself on the run from law enforcement, so that was never a trial. If we can predict it, we can prevent it. That's the bottom line. I can't tell you where the next armed robbery is going to be, and for 25 years as a prosecutor, I couldn't tell you that, but we can tell you with pretty accurate certainty who's going to be involved in the justice system with some of these domestic violence cases because they are slow train wrecks waiting to happen. So this Domestic Violence Shelter and Service Center and partner with Rape Crisis, the Carousel Center, DSS, and NOVANT, teams with, are you ready for this, nine prosecutors' employees that are administered by New Hanover County Grant to the state through the New Hanover Community Endowment Funds, six detectives from the sheriff's office, including Gina Jones, who you recognized earlier with 20 years of service, and six special victims detectives and domestic violence detectives from WPD. So these two dozen justice officials, along with these heads of nonprofit, have come into this center of incarceration that's now a place for transformation that we call the Harrelson Center, immediately across the street from the courthouse. And here's what we've done in just one short year that hopefully... that hopefully gives some hope to the community listening. We now have, for the first time ever, the ability to remotely file domestic violence protective orders. We have done that this year. If judges need to see domestic violence survivors, they no longer have to walk through metal detectors and run into their abuser in the courthouse. They can do that from the cocoon of safety that is the New Hanover County Community Justice Center, and we have the first certified virtual courtroom for that purpose in this area. There are over twenty thousand misdemeanors, and I'm talking about DWI's, bar fights, larcenies, mixed in with all these family violence cases. And so, for the first time in the twenty-five years that I've been watching, we've been able to have a dedicated courtroom exclusively to these family violence cases every Wednesday in courtroom 200. Never had that before, and now they're not falling through the cracks. If you have been watching the verdicts that have been coming out of the courthouse right next to you over this last year, I hope you're as proud of what New Hanover County and the endowment and these nonprofits are doing. I'm so glad that the endowment, incidentally, just funded more positions from the nonprofit community into the Community Justice Center to include Domestic Violence Shelter and Services and the Carousel Center. Now, for the two decades I was your district attorney and twenty-five I was a prosecutor, I knew what it meant to speak for the dead, to give victims a voice at the courthouse, and to be the conscience for this community every time a crime occurred. What I am standing in front of you to say is this. These crimes are predictable and they are preventable, and just as defendants have rights, so do victims. And rights without resources are empty promises. Thank you for giving resources to this center, for all the nonprofits that work in the Community Justice Center, and for the men and women of law enforcement and the prosecutors I served alongside for so many years. That's what this community deserves and they expect, and you're delivering that leadership. So, I wanted to say thank you this morning on behalf of everyone who's under the umbrella of the Community Justice Center. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We gotta picture, man. You take a picture, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
No, I just wanted to make one comment.
Commissioner Walker wanted to make a comment.
Of course. So, I apologize. I should have nudged you. All I wanted to say is, oh, that's loud. I got the opportunity to talk to Lauren this past Friday, and she's not wrong when she says there are survivors in this room. And I will say that we, Commissioner Zappel and I, got to attend the silent witness exhibit, and I think you were there too, Mr. David. I just want to thank you for the work you do, because like, people don't realize the importance of a lot of our nonprofits to do this work. And I really do hope this next budget season, we take a revisit of our county support, because I feel like anytime we can have a, I don't know, social service, touch victims in a way that they can, you know, be helped and reach out to them to be helped, I'm not getting my words right, I'm sorry. But I just basically wanted to thank you, both of you, for the work you've done. I have had the opportunity to come and do a tour of what you do, and I appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of Operation Green Light for Veterans Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning, everyone. Good morning, Betsy.
Good morning.
This New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Resolution is entitled Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, and it reads as follows. Whereas the residents of New Hanover County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas New Hanover County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for civil service and with other organizations to support fellow former service members. And whereas more than fourteen thousand veterans call New Hanover County home. And the county's Veteran Services Department provides comprehensive benefit counseling, claim development, and community outreach to assist an average of two thousand veterans and eligible family members each year in obtaining and maintaining the benefits they have earned. And the Department of Veteran Affairs provides more than, I'm sorry, provided more than two hundred and thirty million last year in compensation, medical care, pensions, education, and other services to veterans residing in New Hanover County. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience significant stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas New Hanover County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes November fourth through the eleventh, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service and is proud to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans by lighting the government center, Health and Human Services Building, and Senior Resources Center in green to let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported. New Hanover County citizens are encouraged to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November fourth through the eleventh, 2025, adopted this twentieth day of October, 2025 by William E. Reivenberg, Chair. Ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, Chair and Commissioners. We really appreciate you adopting this once again this year. This is our fourth year, and we're hoping to see more and more people participate. Not only is it representing, we want to support our veterans, show them that we appreciate it, but also highlighting all the county resources and other benefits that are available to them, whether it's our services and Veteran Services Department. Also, the registered deeds has veteran ID cards. You have the tax exclusions with the tax department. There's so many things that veterans don't know they have access to. And although the veteran population is declining, there is a forty percent gap in North Carolina. So, there's forty percent of veterans that are not enrolled or connected to VA benefits. So, just by showing this light of green, you're creating a conversation. It's like, hey, you serve, we thank you. But not only that, I think we have the obligation to educate ourselves of knowing, like, where to point them to. You need help, there are many resources. So, I really appreciate it. I want to thank county leadership for continuing to, you know, show their commitment to Veteran Services and the veterans of this community as well as facilities that makes this happen with shining our buildings. And I just appreciate it and hope everyone will participate and get their green lights.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, just a quick comment before we go. I'd like to also acknowledge the work of Sarah Warmuth and our facilities team. It's one thing to put it on paper, it's another thing to actually make it happen. And Sarah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I just have one thing to say. I will tell you, my grandparents both served, all my grandparents served in World War II. It's very difficult coming home as a vet. A lot of times, the older generation just don't really like to talk about it. But I feel like we, I think we have an obligation, all of us, to figure out how we can do more to help with the discussion on mental health especially, especially in light of things that have happened lately. But a lot of people that are vets just don't talk about it or they don't know where they can get help. So, I encourage everyone to talk about the resources we have, because y'all run a really good program over there, so that's it.
Thank you.
Next will be consideration of Scottsdale Water Main Extension, CDBG dash one compliance manual resolution.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item for the Scottsdale Water Main Extension. Staff are requesting consideration of a resolution to submit the Community Development Block Grant Compliance Manual to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. The compliance manual is a federal and state requirement that ensures the county's adherence to DEQ and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development program standards. The manual consolidates relevant county policies and procedures into one comprehensive document covering citizen participation, language access, fair housing, employment, procurement, accessibility, and code of conduct. Development of the manual was a collaborative effort, prepared with technical assistance from our CDBGI consultant and input from several departments, including risk, finance, human resources, and civic engagement. Throughout the duration of the Scottsdale Project, the manual will be reviewed and updated to ensure continued compliance with DEQ, HUD, and with other oversight agencies. As a reminder, the Scottsdale Water Main Extension will benefit approximately one hundred and twenty residents across fifty-seven parcels in the old Scottsdale and Kirkland area. The project is jointly funded through local county funds and a federal CDBGI grant. In July, the board approved several agreements related to the Scottsdale Project. Since then, the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority engaged engineering services and the environmental review and engineering report have been prepared and are ready for submission by end of the month. Upon state approval of that report, the county will be authorized to request release of funds and Cape Fear Public Utility can move forward with the design and bid process in 2026. In closing, staff respectfully request the board's consideration of the resolution approving the CDBGI Compliance Manual for the Scottsdale Water Main Extension. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your consideration. And staff are available if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair.
No, it's just good.
Theo, I want to thank you for your persistence in this. I know that our timeline picks up in July of 2025, but in my memory, going back through CFPUA, this is a project that has been talked about for several years. I won't put an exact date on it, but I know it goes back at least to 2023 when the situation which is miserable up there in Scottsdale first came to our attention. But we needed to have somebody who could grab a hold of this and coordinate it. And I think, as I mentioned at the agenda briefing, it's rare that you see a manual that is so comprehensive and so dense. And I know that you went through and read every word and checked every box on it. I thank you for being so thorough. It's, we often say we hire the best and the brightest, and you're a shining example of that, Theo. I thank you. And in this particular case, we're going to see it result in totally filtered water, clean water, for the first time in many of these people's lives up in the Scott Hills area there, and in large part due to your good work and your entire department. But thank you.
Thank you, and the manual reflects the collaborative effort that has certainly been reflected throughout this project. So, thank you for your leadership also.
Anybody want to provide the final direction?
We got a motion to approve, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Theo, thank you.
Last is presentation of the New Hanover County Destination 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update, Final Goals, and Future Land Use Map. Ms. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the board authorized this project in fall 2023, staff have been working to update the county's comprehensive plan, the long-range policy guide for how land in unincorporated New Hanover County is used and developed. Over the past year, we have met with you and the planning board at every major milestone and decision point. Today marks the final step before plan drafts are completed and the full plan draft is released for public review and moves into the formal adoption process. Updating the comprehensive plan is the first step after the board's adoption of a new strategic plan in our continuous planning process, which will keep our policies current, responsive, and aligned with your long-term vision for a vibrant, prosperous, and sustainable coastal community. Today's presentation focuses on two elements of the plan that shape our work moving forward. The goals, objectives, and policies that outline how the county will approach growth and investment, and the future land use map that translates how that policy vision applies to specific places. These are the guiding tools that connect community feedback, board priorities, and the everyday decisions that turn policy into results. As a reminder, the plan's goals describe what we aim to achieve. They are translated into key objectives that can be measured and tracked as well as the future land use map recommendations. The plan's policies will guide future decisions related to development regulations, consideration of rezoning and special use permit requests, capital investments, organizational projects and programs, and additional areas of study. Since the launch of Destination 2050, staff have gathered data on existing conditions, public input in your direction on what matters most, all of which should be reflected in the drafts included in your packet. Today, we're asking your confirmation that they accurately capture your priorities before we finalize the draft document for that public release. First, it may requested that our draft goals be consolidated into a clear, concise framework. The four goals presented today reflect what we understand to be your priorities and provide a clear, straightforward structure around quality of place, infrastructure and support services, environmental stewardship and resiliency, and coordination and engagement. They are intended to show the county's ability to adapt while staying disciplined and focused. The quality of place focus addresses the design and appearance of development, keeping existing neighborhoods stable, improving access to goods and services, supporting community-oriented spaces, and increasing connectivity. It should reflect the community's desire to grow in a way that retains what makes our community distinctive and functional. This next goal area focuses on aligning new growth with infrastructure capacity, improving community safety, and supporting a resilient local economy. It connects directly to efforts for fiscally responsible growth and priorities for long-term infrastructure planning. The lengthiest set of objectives and policies can be found in this goal area, both because environmental stewardship was a key priority stated by the community and board and to fulfill our responsibilities under the Coastal Area Management Act, because our comprehensive plan also functions as the county's Coastal Area Management Act or CAMA Plan. This is where we cover topics such as adapting to natural hazards, reducing vulnerability to flooding, protection of natural resources, tree canopy, open space, and coastal infrastructure. It reflects the disciplined choices necessary to balance growth with protecting what makes this place special. The final goal strengthens how we partner with regional and local agencies and how we communicate with residents. It emphasizes that effective governance depends on trust, transparency, and shared understanding. transparency, and shared understanding, themes at the heart of the county's strategic plan. Each goal directly informs proposed refinements to the future land use map, which shows how we intend to protect existing neighborhood character, focus new development in areas where the county has invested in new infrastructure, retain places for commercial development in a strong residential market, encourage the master planning of development to support the provisions of new infrastructure and to support future growth, and consider environmental constraints. It also coordinates with neighboring jurisdictions to ensure regional consistency. The place types used in this proposed map have been adjusted from those used in the 2016 plan. While the previous plan broadly encouraged mixed use across much of the county, new classifications have been developed so the updated map can be more targeted with more classifications that focus on specific types of uses. It intends to provide clear direction for the type of development the county wants to see moving forward. The resulting proposed future land use map shows how these future land use patterns are envisioned to be applied across the county's planning jurisdiction. It focuses on residential infill in line with existing neighborhood character, commercial corridors that serve nearby residents, and a focus on master planning of large parcels to reduce the amount of piecemeal development that makes it more difficult to understand and mitigate their impacts on the community. The areas covered by each place type and the rationale behind any changes from the 2016 plan are outlined in the breakout maps in your packet. The draft future land use map is designed to be used in conjunction with other maps that will be included in the final plan, including ones that outline nodes and transition areas along commercial corridors, flood advisory areas, and other environmental constraints that should be considered when new developments are being designed and considered. Place type recommendations in the specific policies outlined for your consideration today will also work in coordination with plan guidance on topics such as street design, transitional design elements between new commercial development and adjacent residential neighborhoods, and priority transportation projects. Each goal will be paired with measurable targets and implementation strategies. This turns policy into a working tool that lets the board and public track progress over time, reinforcing confidence in how county policies are carried out. Again, your direction today is requested to confirm that the plan's goals, policies, and future land use map align with your expectations. This will allow staff to finalize our draft, so it can be released for public review next month ahead of a January Planning Board public hearing and February Board of Commissioners' public hearing. Thank you again for your time today. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to take any questions or feedback you might have at this time.
Anybody have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rebecca, wonderful work. When I went through this and read every word of it, my impression when I finished was you and your staff have really been listening to the decisions been made by this board, but also to the entire community, and have made what I think are very judicious and, you know, measured steps from our 2016 comprehensive plan, identifying those areas. And a key among them is communication, communication with developers, communications with this board, and most importantly, with the public. You've taken, you know, several steps here, very specific ones, and I think the breakout list of maps that you've provided there make it very clear as to what is expected where, and it gives a, literally a roadmap for us to look into the future and what your expectations were, or are. Particularly, thank you for a focus on protecting our quality of life, and a uniting theme throughout is the concept of public transportation, which is something that, you know, is necessary for the success of a lot of this. And I look forward to working on that in the future. So also, on your slide number 17, Eric, if you're up there, and you can come back to that. No, keep going. Two more, three more. Oh, I see. It was page number 17. I thought it was slide 17. Perhaps I'm not. It's the one that lists all the identification of target measures and implementation strategies. You know where I'm at, Rebecca?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, there it is, right there. I hope you'll consider adding a couple more bullet points to there, one being the percent of open and green space that's on there, and also one that would focus on transportation corridors and the percent of public served and that has access to it. Because I think those are key to our future.
Yes, sir. We will be fleshing out, based on your feedback and direction today, the full scope of measure, so that's very helpful feedback.
Again, thank you. This is a wonderful study. I know that there's literally thousands of hours that have gone into it on your part and your entire staff. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Rebecca, I also want to thank you. This document, I think, not only fairly reflects what we've been hearing from the community, and as Commissioner's Apple said, some of what we've been talking about up here on the dais, but what may not be clear to the public until we tell them, is that we all have been meeting regularly with you and your staff to discuss these items, to try to explain what we want this document to look like, what the priorities are that we want to see in this document. And I would think that all five of us would agree that first and foremost, among the many things that we want to see, is that element of conservation and green space to the most degree that it is possible. And at the same time, of course, setting up some fair rules that people can look to and understand that if I play by these rules, there is an expectation that I will be able to move forward with a smart development project. So trying to set up that framework is something that I think all five of us talk to staff about, and this document appears to very fairly reflect that. I would also just offer to the public that this is an important inflection point. We have heard you. We are attempting to make some changes to the way that we do things in New Hanover County, but it is incumbent upon you as involved citizens to please look at a document like this and provide feedback to us. I think that that's something that we want to hear as we go into this process because, as you've already pointed out, this is the framework that we are going to be utilizing moving forward once it's approved. So it's important that we're all on the same page about what this document does and what this document does not do. But I think that this document very fairly reflects the dialogues that we've had with you and your staff, and I commend you for putting the hard work into getting us to this point.
Thank you. And I also want to recognize, because this was not my work, my staff has worked tremendously on this. Katia Boykin, Carleen Ellis Vitalis, and Dylan McDonald have spent tremendous amounts of time preparing these documents, listening to what you have said and what the citizens have said as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to just reiterate also, obviously, thank you to you and your team, but also, I think, what I have heard since, you know, when I ran for office this past year, across the political spectrum, was concerned about stormwater, was concerned about, you know, trees and conservation. So I will say that this very much does align with a lot of that. I, you know, I still say Florence is one of the worst hurricanes I've ever experienced, and, you know, where I live in the northern part of the county, I've seen some of the maps that you've got up here that do reflect the worry over flooding for folks. And so that is, for me anyway, I think, and probably for all of us, the biggest part, bigger part of what I really look at when we look about, when we look at development going forward. I will also say, you've got energy in here somewhere. Is there any way, I think I talked to Pam Hardy about this. Are we, we're looking at the amount of, I mean, the people are going to keep coming and moving in according to our study. Are we concerned at all about energy? Like, I don't want to be, like, overburdening the grid and things like that. Do we, have we looked at that at all in the study?
So not specifically that information. As we move forward with this and we look at what is it that we need to be doing as staff to implement this direction, we wanted to wait until we confirmed that we had gotten it right before we moved too far in identifying those measures. That is definitely something we can look at further and increase whatever coordination is necessary to ensure that we are serving the developments that are identified in this plan in a way that truly represents what your desire is.
Yeah, I just feel like a lot, I think vehicles are starting to move more and more to electric dominate. I mean, everything's getting plugged in now, and I think the consuming of energy, even in the internet realm, and, you know, I just think we should really look at that for the future. I mean, I don't know if we talked about that before, but I would love to dive into that a little bit more. Hate to put more work on you, but I do, I am concerned about it. I read somewhere that it looked like the post office was going to move to all electric vehicles. I just feel like if everything's getting plugged in, I worry that our grid, if our grids are going to uphold that. So I'll talk to you later about that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Are you approving that? Is it an approval?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Okay, next is committee appointments. First one is New Hanover County Commission on African-American History, Heritage, and Culture.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Carolyn Beatty.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is New Hanover County Inspection Department Advisory Council.
Greg Wallace.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Jury Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to reappoint or nominate for reappointment Sheila Nicholson.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And last is New Hanover County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Terry Smith from the Faith Community.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's the end of the regular debate. Now we go to public comment, and the first speaker is Adrian Garber. Ms. Garber, you've got three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you for listening. Before I saw the Destination 2050 Comprehensive Land Use Map, I was looking at the 2016 Comprehensive Land Use Map, the one we are using now. The plan states that the vision reflects the need for a change in development patterns and includes switching from traditional sprawling development patterns to a denser mixed-use style of land use, allowing New Hanover County to achieve higher levels of density, leaving room to preserve and protect the county's natural resources. The plan is over 100 pages and repeatedly addresses the intent to conserve our natural resources throughout the document. Less than 10 years later, we are building like this, backfilling flood-prone lands and building tall retaining wall systems and man-made ponds. The whole intent of the higher-density plan was to preserve our natural resources, not backfill them. I'd like to look at a specific example where I feel the presentation of the 2016 plan to the public was misleading. Here is an aerial view of River Road. It takes a big bend where it traverses Motts Creek before connecting to Sanders Road. This parcel was clearly shown to be in a conservation zone in the map when presented to the public in 2016. This map tells me that the county will conserve these green areas. This lot was at a lower elevation than River Road and usually had standing water, so much so that the road turned here to get around the low area adjacent to Mox Creek and the marsh. Today, River Road's surface is now lower than the new backfilled elevation. Given this, how am I supposed to view any new maps? And this home in the background now sits between retaining walls on both sides. The 2016 Comprehensive Land Use Plan also states growth is predicted to be 57% by the year 2040. This does not have to be the case. We do not have to grow that fast if we don't want to. And promoting these higher densities under a veil of greenwashed intent to conserve natural resources is nothing short of a lie. Builders build, planners plan, engineers engineer.
Ms. Garber, your time's up. I'm sorry.
This is the conservation, this is a conservation zone.
Laura McCabe.
Perhaps a slightly different perspective. Chairman, Riven Barkin County Commissioners, my name is Laura McCabe, and I'm here on behalf of the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, a local nonprofit dedicated to protecting, preserving, and planting trees in our region. The Alliance commends Rebecca Roth and her staff for the Destination 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and we look forward to seeing its aspirational goals to protect and enhance our valuable and critical natural resources implemented. To that end, the Alliance has recently issued a policy paper called Code and Canopy that we hope you will use as a guide for strengthening the county unified development ordinance. Code and Canopy contains real-world examples of ordinances and incentives from other benchmark municipalities that can be implemented here to halt and reverse tree canopy loss and preserve the character of our wonderful community. Over the next few months, we at the Alliance look forward to seeing the preservation objectives in the Destination 2050 Comprehensive Plan implemented through updates to the unified development ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manager, you got anything?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Real fast, I just wanted to clarify that our motion on that Destination 2050 item was to let Rebecca and staff know that we were directionally in the right, going in the right way, and that there will be further follow-up and community outreach. I just don't want to give a misapprehension to the public that we have somehow shoehorned this in without any further discussion.
No, sir. You have not changed existing policy. You've affirmed that what Rebecca shared is directionally correct. She will now put it into the public process, which requires comment, hearing, planning board consideration, county commission consideration. That was the signal to proceed as presented.
I could have just imagined some confusion could have arisen without us specifying what the motion was. We certainly want this to be an open and transparent process, as it has been up to this point and will remain through the time that we ultimately arrive at the ultimate vote.
Yes, sir. To that point, the existing plan and the policies around that remain the existing plan and policies until this comes to the board. Rebecca's best estimate is February for final consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
No, no problem. Because Rob added two things to it that, there's a lot of stuff still got to be done. This meeting's adjourned.